Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order for June 14th of the Board of Selectmen. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
That was confusing.
The first agenda item is the election of a new chair. It's been my pleasure to be chair for the last year. I've really enjoyed it. I think the, I enjoy working with my colleagues. I think we've accomplished a lot in the last year and, but I'm very happy to be turning that over now to one of you gentlemen. And so we need to have a discussion about how we're going to select our next chair. Thoughts?
Should be someone that's been on the board for a while, I think. Nothing against you, Dan, but, or myself. Someone new coming on really needs to get up to speed on what the board's been doing for the last year or so, so. If you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that.
How, I'm sorry, what do you, which have you, Dan?
I'm fine with that. I'm going to be learning, so I'd rather focus on learning.
Of course, I, as chair in the prior year, I'm going to say I'm going to pass on this. We do rotate each year, that's been the practice. So, is there a motion here?
I'll make a motion that we elect Dave Winchell Jr. as chair.
Anyone care to second that?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Would you like to move over here or are you also right there?
No, I'm fine right here. I don't think it really matters.
Okay.
So, okay.
Can I have just 30 seconds before you?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the, everyone that came out and voted yesterday. There's what, 405 people that came out and voted? And thanks for re-elect, or re-electing me or electing me, however you want to look at it, back in for year number 10 as selectman. So, I do appreciate the support and we'll move forward from what we learned from before and take off running here.
Dan, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I'm really excited to be here and I appreciate everyone for your votes. And I'm really looking excited to working alongside each and every single one of you in these next three years. So, thank you for this opportunity.
And I guess while we're on this, I like to put a good thank you to Kim Stacey Horn for the time that she's given us here and helped us out and done, doing what she's done, so, thank you. Okay, all set, guys? Okay, so we're going to move on here to warrant bills. We all signed up?
Signed.
Signed. Dan?
I don't think you've seen them yet.
Oh, you haven't seen them yet?
No.
Okay, so you're after the meeting there?
Yeah, if we have three of you, we can approve them and we can go over them after the meeting if you have a few minutes.
Yep.
Tom?
I've signed them.
You're all good? Okay. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting. I want to make a motion to approve May 17th and May 31st. How's that work? Nobody was, other than me, was at that?
It's going to be tricky because you were only at one and Tom was at one. The board can review them, but I mean, they're technically board members now, so.
Okay, so Tom, you were, you were at the 17th, so you can second that one.
Okay, so why don't we, I'll second the motion to approve the minutes for May 17th.
All in favor?
We got three, right?
So...
They're just minutes.
You could still, yeah.
What was, this one here, I'm the only one?
I feel like the board can still participate.
I think you, yeah, I think you.
I mean, they didn't make any motions, they didn't, you know.
Okay, so, we're here, a second on the 31st?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Dan, where you on on that?
I wasn't there, so I don't feel it's appropriate for me to vote, to approve something I wasn't there for.
Okay, where are we here? Minutes of the last, I don't know, town administrator, weekly update.
Okay, just a few things for you. First, the next paper that you have in your packet came in from Mr. Dick Neal. He asked that you receive the Lincoln School Preservation Project. So, if you can read over that, we can decide if it needs to be a further agenda item later. It's just for your review. Next item that I...
Is this from, ask a question. Was this, is this from the Historical Society or from Mr. Neal?
This came from Dick Neal.
Because it said, I did look at the last paragraph. I just want to clarify this. Is this a project that the Historical Society is taking on or Mr. Neal?
It's my understanding that it is Mr. Neal. I've got something going on with the Historical Society, so I'll reach out to Tracy directly and see what the actual...
I would like to know who's, who's responsible here. Okay.
So, we'll get back to on that, but please read it.
Taking a lead on the restoration of the school, so it sounds like the Act of Chapel and Circle Society will...
That's exactly what that...
That's what that says, but that may, I just want to confirm, you have them confirm that's what's going to happen.
Well, right, and it says that they're, this, they're looking to have a committee appointed. And these, at least two of these committee members are not on the Historical Society. So, let me, let me talk to Tracy, the chair of the Historical.
Great.
And get back to you next week.
And what would be really nice is if we can have some representatives of the Historical Society come up and kind of explain what we, what they want to do.
What their role is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best thing to do.
So, we'll get that on the agenda for next week. The next document in your packet, assuming you're going in, in order, is, I gave you some updates on the town meeting participation because this has been talked about and people have been asked. So, I gave you five years' worth. So, we had 103 people show up, get checked in at town meeting. They got checked in in the beginning. 72 last year, 81 the year before, 108 in 19, and 97 in 18. The one missing year is 2020 because that's when we had COVID and we had 566 ballots. So, it certainly, you know, was talked about around town, but it really didn't do much to the numbers as far as, I gave a breakdown of the added expense. We're looking at about $2,600 is what we spent on between the signs, zippy coffee, postage, the food, babysitter, staff time, to tape. So, something to think about, no decisions to be made tonight. It's just information for you to have as we travel down that road in the future.
I think town meeting went pretty well this year. We, I saw a lot of new people that I've never seen there before, which was interesting. It was good, good to see them. And we, some of those new people got on some committees, so that's pretty awesome.
I, you know, it, I think there were 400 that voted on Tuesday.
405, yeah.
405, so basically 25% of, you know, so that's actually not bad. So, not as high as it, we'd love to see it, but it was an improvement over the last couple of years.
Yep, yep. It did thin out a little bit at the end, Lincoln always does.
Yeah, it always does. People, you know, they're looking, yeah.
How did the daycare do? Any, did they have any...
Yeah, she had five or six kids in the beginning. By the end, she was down to one, but...
Okay, good, yep.
She was happy to do it.
Well, I want to put a big thanks out to Bridgette for doing that. That's awesome.
That's the type of thing that if there was one kid there all day, it was worth it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Really, because it meant, it meant that a parent was able to go to the meeting.
Right.
Great.
I think it's good that we saw an increase, but I think, looking at the numbers when we look in the future, 25% of the people turned out to vote. But the people who turned out to vote, what percentage of our overall voter turnout was that? I think if we look at those numbers...
I didn't hear that last part.
Looking at like our, how many registered voters we have. 400 is good, but if we take that 100 of the overall total, it is significantly lower than 25%. So, I definitely think we need to...
Well, yeah, if you take, what do we, how many?
Need to look at it from that perspective.
22, 2300 people, yeah, yeah, if you look at the overall, yeah, it ain't good. But we're just trying to figure out with the numbers that we've had in the previous years whether or not, you know, we're making progress or not.
How many registered voters do we have?
22, 2300.
So, basically 20% ended up voting a ballot, right?
I think a couple of years ago in Sanford, I think they had like 5% of the voter.
Every election is different, it's a matter of what, what it turns out.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Speaking of town meeting and the election results, so as far as town meeting, I guess I just want the board to start thinking about, because as soon as town meeting comes and goes, department heads and staff, they all start, you know, hovering that they want to start buying and moving forward with things that are on there. So, I think once we get through the liaison, we can start talking more about it. But if you could just kind of go through the articles that were purchases and maybe we can talk about it over the next few weeks on how we want to deal with things. Maybe it's the road survey, maybe it's the transfer station, you know, get some direction. Let's take a, sit back and take a look at what passed, which was everything, and make some plans. So, just hoping you'll review the warrants, you know, the increases. Are we just making those effective July 1? Are we, you know, tying them in with any merits? I mean, that's all your choices down the road. So, just review your warrant over the next few weeks, please. A reminder, if you did get elected to any committee, you need to be coming and sworn in. Other than the select board, all of the other ones take effect July 1st. So, we still have committee members through June 30th. The select board, I think, is aware, but for the public, in case you see it posted again, as you're aware, we did hire a town administrative assistant and a deputy town clerk. The deputy town clerk, last Friday, after two weeks, indicated that it wasn't going to be a good fit for her family and daycare scheduling. So, she declined the position after the two-week trial. So, that job will be posted again any day now. So, you'll see that. We still have an alternate planning board member seat open, if anybody is interested in that. And we had a very nice turnout to, for the memory of Claire Bragg on Monday. Thank you to everybody that participated. And now, as the little time goes on, it's time for us to think, start thinking about the oldest resident again. We will be working closely with the Historical Society. That's something that they do with us and we'll work out a presentation date. I believe I know who it is. I'm not going to advertise it based on voter records. But if you feel like you know somebody in town, at least over 95, 96, contact me. If they're younger than that, I've already got somebody beat. So, we'll advertise that for a week or two and figure out what works with the Historical Society. The only problem with this presentation is, based on the age of the residents, they like the presentation to be during the day. So, we'll certainly do our best to include you guys, but...
We did that with Claire, didn't we?
We did it during the day, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
So, I know some of you work, but even if we can get half of you there, we'll sneak out early.
Yeah, if we can plan ahead enough there, I'm sure we can do something.
Something you're going to do fairly soon?
Um, yeah, I mean, you know...
Within a month or two?
Oh, no, no, come, two weeks, I'm thinking.
Could we shoot for a Friday?
Yeah, we could.
Because I'm off Fridays.
You're off Fridays, okay. And with enough notice?
Oh, I, whenever I have to.
All right, so let me organize it with them and reach out to the residents. We'll advertise it as well for two weeks.
Yep.
Awesome.
Uh, I think that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Department head, committee chair updates?
We're not going over that yet.
Uh, Bill Langley, District 1. I just want to point it out to the public that I've gotten some phone calls about the pond down here right before the campground. The, the water's wicked high right now. We had some beavers in there again. We trapped three of them. And we're going to go back down in there and clean out the front of the cover again. So, when I get my new budget, I'm going to have to go down there again. This time, I had to pull all the brush out. And then, when we had all the rain back in May, some of the rock washed down in front of the cover. So, I picked as much out as I could by hand. So, I'm going to have to go back in there like we did. I think it was like four or five years ago, I went down there with my excavator and we pulled all the stuff out again. So, that's why the water's high. But, but now we're dealing with the turtles, so I'll get that opened up as soon as the turtles are gone. And then, one other thing, it's all right with you guys. I was contacted by the York County Civil Water District again this year. And they want to work on a project with me again on the H Road, actually in the same spot. They want me to put some riprap, plunge pools in to catch the water. They have like some grant money and they're going to match like half the project. So, it's like $5,000 project, they'll match like 2,500 of it, so.
So, you're going to utilize what's in your budget to do something?
Yeah, yeah, but then they'll match half the project.
That's something you'd be bringing to us anyways.
Right, right.
Okay, at some point.
Right, yeah, no, they just want me to okay with you guys before they, you know, before we went any farther. Because they have it all engineered and stuff. I got to meet with the engineer, so I didn't want to go any farther until I talked to you guys.
Have you ever thought about possibly putting some screens or something in front of that cover down there?
Yeah, when we do that, when we clean it out, I'm going to get some like potions and like, you know, some of that wire there and I'm going to put like a box out there quite a ways and we try not to worry about it again.
I was always told that a beaver won't build on a flat surface.
Yeah, I know, I see like the state of New Hampshire does it. I mean, I, I mean, they clean them out here and there, but yeah, that's what we're going to do now. Because it's kind of a pain to keep going.
Especially that's a really tough spot to get to.
Yeah, right, so that's, that's our plan. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good afternoon. Dan Crapitz, Mary Grant Committee. Thanks for the support of the community and the board. We realized $412 in donations from serving food at the town meeting. One of our best fundraisers, quote unquote, to date, so thank you, thank the community very much. Next up is going to be a community picnic on Saturday, July 15th. I'm working with one of my committee members while I still have him to create a flyer for me. And we'll get it plastered all over Facebook in the coming weeks. It's all ahead, thank you.
We appreciate it. It was nice having a fresh coffee and doing that.
Anybody else?
Okay.
I have a question actually on that. You guys have mentioned the last, one of the last meetings that you wanted to start. You wanted me to get a rotation going with the department heads and committees to have them come in, you know, orderly, if you will?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so I'll start working on that schedule. It's going to work in.
I assume you still wouldn't think, I'm interested in it.
So, we'll explain to these guys what we were talking about, what we were talking about doing. And I think we talked about years ago, doing it, we kind of really didn't do it.
Well, we did it, they didn't show up.
Well, we didn't force them to come in, okay? So, this time maybe we'll have to. But rotating through departments and that way they, you know, once, once a month, you know, like the road commission can go, even though they come all the time, you know, we give the departments once a month to come up through and just give an update for us. That way there, we can stay in touch with them. Okay, all set? Liaison assignments?
All right, so in front of you, you all have a list. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So, when all's said and done, I'd like to see you gentlemen have four, three each. The only change from last year, I combined finances, Warren Finance slash Town Treasury, now that we're doing the investment and we have Mark Roy. That kind of all ties together, so I'm hoping that one person will do all of that. What we've done in the past, I know you guys have seen this list, is that based on seniority, we would just go down around and pick and assign until the list is gone. So, David, that would put you first.
Actually, I actually enjoyed working with the Code Enforcement and Planning Board last year. Well, this, this year, I guess. So, I like to stay on and do it, doing that one there.
Okay, Tom?
Okay. Still some work to do on finances, working with the town treasurer. I also would like to work with the Warren Finance Committee and see what we could do to accelerate the budget process and try to enhance it. So, I'd like to take finances.
Good. I was hoping you'd say that with Mark Roy and everybody coming on. No offense, gentlemen. All right, Ed?
Fire Department?
Uh, Ed, Fire Department. And I'm going to assume that, Dan, you wouldn't have taken Fire Department because technically, based on votes, you would have gone first. So, I apologize. Go ahead, Dan.
As an educator, I would like to take the school committee.
Okay. All right, David? That's good, you guys all got a big one. Well, David?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, go ahead. What are you thinking?
Well, I'm just trying to think what I haven't done in a while.
Apat, have you tried Apat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to go one of the major ones first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, uh, because I was going to do school, because I haven't done that in a while, but I think at this point, I don't know, roads, transfer, I was transfer stationing before last. I was hoping Ed would do the transfer station this year, if that, if you're interested in that. Are you interested in that one?
Sure.
Because, I mean, that's kind of down your alley. That's what you do. Tom, do you see anything on there you're interested in?
David!
Trying to get rid of something here, it's like a kind of...
Just, David, just pick one.
I, um... What are the major ones that are left when you say major? They're all major. They're all major. I'll go with the Cemetery Committee.
All right. All right. Back to you, David. You got to pick one.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, you didn't pick.
No, he was trying, he was trying to process of elimination.
You'd be the next one, I'm trying to... Well, you know, I mean, you know, right now, we have, we have a road project coming along, okay? But, you know, I wanted to give them an opportunity if they wanted to jump on that. But if they don't, I'll take the roads again. I'll do that, just to, because of the bridge projects and everything else that's coming up.
Okay, that's your pick.
Well, we could split that if you wanted. There's a few, David.
No, 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 I'll take it, I have no problem, but...
I think it makes sense for you to continue with the Bridge Project because you started it and you might as well finish it at this point, whether or not that means you've, you do the roads. And I think it's your choice, but you could split that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just trying to find another... I'm not sure what I want. Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll roll with that.
You're going to go with the roads?
Yeah, I think that's probably at this point, because other than that, the other ones are just fill-ins anyways.
What was it? I didn't hear this, but...
The other ones are, are more of our fill-in ones, you know, the smaller, the smaller departments. So, I mean, I'm just, I don't, I don't see where else, everything else is taken, right?
Well, no, I mean, take the rec or the capital improvement, Mary Grant, Apat, they're all just as important.
Actually, there's going to be a lot going on with the rec, isn't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot going on down there.
You know, actually, you know what? I'll take the rec. I'll do the rec.
All right, so...
All right, I've already picked the Cemetery Committee.
Transfer Station was kind of, Ed, you said you wanted to?
Sure, I'll take that.
Okay, all right, so now...
So, Ed, you're doing the transfer?
Yep.
Ed, what do you think?
I'll take... I'll take the Conservation and Forest Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
It's back to me, isn't it?
Well, let's see what we've got left. 1, 2, 3. Yeah, so let's talk about the last two. So, Apat, Mary Grant, Capital Improvement. Tom, let's just go on roads.
So, we've got four left?
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, four. Roads, Capital Improvement, Mary Grant, and Apat.
Somebody already got the Cemetery Committee?
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, I got...
Yep. I didn't write it down.
That's okay.
Tom, I thought you had some interest in the Apat contract that...
I, yeah, I wasn't going to jump ahead of David.
Oh, I'm...
No, no, actually, I would prefer you would do that, so I'll make my decision a little easier.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine with Apat. That's fine. Dan will have put up with me, so, sure, let's do that.
And, Dan, David, are we going back to you? Or are you trying to, you want to see what they think first?
No, no, um, yeah.
Say, three apiece?
Yep, so we get one more each.
Do you guys have any ideas what you may want to do?
You've got three already.
I do?
You took, you took Code Enforcement?
Yeah, and rec.
You took rec and you took roads.
He didn't take roads.
No, he didn't take roads.
Oh, you didn't take roads?
No.
Dan, Ed, do you have, either one of you have any...
We have roads, Capital Improvement, Mary Grant left for you three.
I have a question. Am I allowed to take Mary Grant if I'm a standing member of that committee?
No, it'd actually probably be a good idea.
I mean, the, the purpose of the liaison, I mean, it's, you know, and it's important that, it's not a decision-making, you know, unless there's an emergency, it's really just to bring information back.
Point of contact.
What, you, you don't want to be the liaison that goes in and runs the show. You're supposed to be sitting back and just watching, helping them, you know, run the meeting, you know, if they have a hard time. Like, once I went in and we sat them, everybody down and showed them how to run the meeting and all that. So, I mean, you, you're kind of part of it, but you're kind of not.
Yeah, I understand the concept of a liaison. I just think I'm already going to be making most of their meetings anyways. It'd be good to have a person who's, can make most of the meetings. I think it makes sense. So, I just want to make sure it wasn't a conflict of interest or anything like that.
What's the conflict of interest?
I don't know, serving...
There's, there's no conflict of interest. You just, we just want to make clear that, you know, that we're, like, when we go to the finance committees or road committees, we're not...
You get to attend meetings, is that why, is that what you do?
Yeah, that's because I do work in...
But you're not a member.
I am a member.
He is a member of the committee, that's what I'm saying.
So, that's, that's why I was asking. That was the conflict I was referring to when I asked if it was...
Actually, if you become the liaison, you could step down as a member and make another spot for a member, someone else to join you.
You kind of hasn't stepped down as a member anyways.
Well, that's why he's not, right, that's why I'm trying to step in here and say there is a conflict. He's not, he's staying, staying on and being a liaison.
Oh, no, I believe, I believe.
It is a conflict.
Kind of got to be one of them.
Yeah, but I believe you should step down as, like, like, like he did on the Warren Finance.
Well, Warren Finance may be different because it's an elected position. We'd have to check, but nevertheless, is it your...
I think it just makes sense for liaisons not to be...
On the committee.
On the committees.
Well, then, if that's the case, I will, if no one has any, I'll take the Capital Improvement.
Okay.
Perfect. How about you, Ed? Do you have a preference?
Roads.
You want it, you got it.
Sure.
I'll be Mary Grant.
Yeah, Ed, that was easy. Okay.
Okay, so let's just make sure I got this right. So, Dave is going to be Code Enforcement and Planning Board. He's going to be, oops. Dan is going to be on the School Committee. Finances is going to be Tom. Conservation is going to be, Forest is Dan. Fire Department is Ed. Transfer Station is Ed. Rec is David, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And roads is Ed. Capital Improvements is Dan. Mary Grant is Dave. And Cemetery is Tom. Is that right?
Yeah, and Apat.
Apat is Tom.
Apat is Tom.
Okay, good.
All right, so we'll create the same memo that we send out to departments and staff.
Great.
Let them know.
We got some meetings coming up here shortly, don't we?
And remember, as liaisons, just so you guys know, you're not expected to go to every meeting. It's not, you know, it's, they come to you with information, you're, you know, bring it back to the full board. Um, especially with the new ones with rec and APAT. Well, um, I would encourage you guys to read the updated town administrator's job description as well, because I don't want it to cross conflict between change you guys recently did and, uh, the APAT director, for example, the treasurer, so.
Yep. Okay, mass gathering.
Alright.
Okay, where are we here?
Old business.
Old business, Renaissance Fair.
So in David's packet is the original, um, application for Renaissance Fair. Melanie is here, and, um, she's here to talk to you about the traffic plan.
I was told you folks had some questions.
Yep, and I told you.
So I am here to present myself.
Have it prepared.
Should I speak in the Queen's English? My lord.
Oh, that's awesome.
Many thanks for having me here. How can I be of service?
Well, the traffic plan. Tell them about your traffic plan.
Well, the, the traffic plan is, I, did you get a copy of the email?
It just got sent.
Okay.
They haven't seen it.
I contacted the sheriff's office. I've hired two officers to help us. So besides our parking crew, um, which were going over all the, um, rules and how they're gonna get people off the road quickly, to queue them in the lot instead of out in the road. Um, so we've kind of reconfigured that. And of course, the Acton Fair has created a new access to the, uh, gravel pit parking from 109. So now we will not be using 13th Street at all. There'll be signs, no parking, blah, blah, blah. Um, and we'll have signing for that other parking lot and between the officers, and we should be, I think we should be fine. The worst day is Saturday, opening day. That's our heaviest day in the beginning. We open the lot at nine, we open the gates for the fair at 10.
So, so as I, uh, as I understand, last, last year, so that there was quite a, a, a traffic line trying to get into the event, is that right? And that's what the issue is here?
Yeah.
And so what I'm trying to understand is, what's gonna be different this year that you're doing that will mitigate that and reduce that long line?
Okay.
It created a lot of issue for people trying to get around.
What I'm doing is, my parking lot attendants were meeting people at the gate and kind of stopping them there and then waiting to send them on. I'm having them move up into the lot further, so they can create a line in the parking lot and then send them over to their different guys parking them. Um, plus, having the officers right there in the road to direct traffic, which we haven't done that yet.
Is it still gonna be two lanes, or are we looking to somehow make it three, or is it two, we're just gonna have two lanes of traffic?
Well, that's, that was what my concern was, because, I mean, it doesn't matter how many people you put inside the fairgrounds, eventually that'll plug up.
They're gonna stack up.
Out on the road anyways, cause I think the issue we were having last year was, um, the traffic was always down to the train post over the bridge.
Yeah, it was down into Chaplin.
It's not my fault. I run a good event. They come.
And all that, we, we, we really think it's a pretty good idea. We just, the problem we're having is
Sure.
You know, with the complaints that we're getting, 13th Street, people, they were worried about getting ambulances and
Right.
Fire trucks out of there.
Totally understand, yeah.
And 109, we gotta be able to make sure emergency vehicles and people can get the other way.
Absolutely.
To the hospital, so, uh, whether or not, you know, you guys are having a third lane set up to get traffic.
Can we put up cones for people that are going in to, you know, be in one lane and traffic can still get by in a center lane?
You know, if you have the sheriff's department there, they can run traffic control for you.
Exactly.
Uh, we just, we just have to have something more than what we had last year.
Right, absolutely, and that's why I went and got the two officers.
Yep.
So.
So I think beyond officers, I think we need to do something to keep the traffic flowing. And so, um, I, I would hope that we would commit to, unless there's some safety reason not to do it, having a third lane.
Yeah, that's the only way you're gonna.
I, I don't know how else to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Is, is that something we've, who's gonna approve that? Is that a state approval to do that?
You know, it's a state road. I mean, I don't know if they have to have a, uh, a permit or anything to create a new lane. It, it'd be no different than having a, uh, a job going on where you do a safety zone. So I would think the sheriff's department can do that.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, I can, I can contact them.
I don't think they're gonna, they probably won't supply all the cones or anything, but they could probably.
You may have to get the cones for that, for a month.
I can get cones.
I would discuss it with them to see whether or not they can enforce that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, to do that, you have to be traffic control certified and all that. Normally, they are.
Yes.
Um, you know, we have people on our fire department who are also, you know, certified in doing that, but
Yeah.
Um, I think Tom's right.
In essence, there may be a third, well, there's a, there's a second entrance, which is gonna make a big difference from.
The entrance she's talking about is where they're gonna go into the, the pit.
Right.
So.
Right, but that's still gonna get, that's gonna get a lot of cars off of 109. Once again, you're getting them in across from Iron Tails, and you're getting them up and going down into the new pit parking.
Well, we're worried about right there at Iron Tails where it's.
Yeah, that's usually where.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the choke point.
I mean, once it, if it starts to get a little chokey, send them up to the other.
Yeah.
The other one as well.
That's gonna be on you guys to do that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Split them up. Say, you're here, go down to the next lot. You're here, go down to the next lot. We'd be able to move them faster.
I'm afraid we're just talking about ideas.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I'm good with the idea that the sheriff's department's gonna be doing some, uh, traffic control. Let's see how it runs this year.
Yeah.
If it's better, then we're good. If we have the same issue we had last year, we'll have to go further.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the role of recommendation.
Just an FYI, and this is totally, we don't know, because the universe is unpredictable. This may be the last year we're at the Acton Fairgrounds.
Really?
We purchased 52 acres of land in Springvale.
Oh, cool.
Nice.
And we are creating a permanent hard site.
Nice.
Yep.
Whether I can get together all the financing and make it happen for 2024, we're gonna give it our best shot.
Yep.
If not, we'll do one more year in Acton, and then we'll be on our hard site.
So you, you guys all set with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Dan?
It seems like one of the major concerns that was mentioned was emergency vehicles. I'm curious as to if we've talked to the fire department, if they have any suggestions of what would work for them if there was an emergency. I feel like if that's a concern, they would best know what the best plan would be for them if something came up. Just a thought. I mean, they may agree with the third lane, but I think if that was one of our safety concerns.
Well, I think the whole idea of having the sheriff's department down there is to make it so we, we have, make, make, keep the access open. If the access is open, then it shouldn't be a problem. And obviously, they should be able to communicate with the fire department anyways if there was an issue. I mean, I'm thinking that's, so, um, do I hear a motion to approve the, uh, mass gathering permit?
Make a motion to approve the mass gathering permit for, um, the Renaissance Fair taking place July 22nd, 23rd?
And 29th and 30th.
29th and 30th.
Correct.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Okay, do we have to sign this, or?
Yeah, I think the third page, I think.
I'll get you a copy.
Huh?
Oh, it's right there. Yep, right there.
I'll get you a copy.
Thank you.
You don't have to wait. I mean, it'll be tomorrow, I can get you a copy.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, you're welcome to stay.
Many thanks, my lord. I will wait very well.
Thank you, my lady. It's a really cool event. I love it.
Yeah, give those guys credit.
Have you gone?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really? I, I gotta check it out.
I've gone a couple of years.
I give them credit, though. It seems to me every time they have it, it's the hottest day of the year.
Oh, yeah.
Wearing all this heavy stuff.
If you've never seen jousting, go and watch, cause they actually do jousting.
No kidding?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then I gotta, I gotta check this out. Alright.
We're gonna have to add some lines to these.
Aye, I know. On my list.
Thank you. Okay, Renaissance, West Shore Drive.
Okay.
Property owner agreement, boardwork.
All kinds of things in here. Um, the first thing that you have, um, is the, what you should have is a property agreement. This was drawn up by the town of Acton's attorneys, um, between the town of Acton and the West Shore Drive development. This is the two property owners in which we'll be creating a temporary road. They have already signed it. I gave it to you guys last week to review, so I'm hoping this gets signed tonight. Um, you wanna start with that?
Yeah, let's start with it. Well, I, why don't we group it all together?
So that needs to be signed. Um, second, we need to start talking about a special town meeting, and we need to start talking about, uh, what kind of numbers we're looking at. Um, in your packets, and two of you received a copy last week, um, and Will is here to discuss it in further detail if you wish. Um, there is, well, if you look at the current balance sheet that I gave you from West Shore Drive, we know that Article 40 passed, so we are up to 319,007.48. The Nick Curtis bid was 311, so that left us 87.48. Um, we're budgeting on seven weeks for the property owners. We hope that we don't need that many, but seven weeks is 21,000. Remember, they wanted 3,000 a week. That brings you to 29,748 and change. Um, the excavation work from Langley is 47,565. So you're at 77,314 at a special town meeting before the additional legal costs. I think we have one outstanding bill from Brad. And ransom did indicate that there was some pinning that was requested in, um, Curtis's bid that she, they didn't plan on, some survey pinning that he requested.
Oh, the GPS?
Yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, so there may be a couple of lingering bills for them as well, so we need to factor that in.
Okay.
I'm looking for a date, a time, an amount, and.
Can I squish the, the math on this, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Uh, the 8,741 is what we have available.
That's what we have left, 319.
And you're adding the 21,000 to it.
Correct.
Wouldn't you subtract that?
No, cause we had after, we pay, so we have 319. We subtracted Curtis.
We, we, we take off 311, we, we're down, we got $8,700.
Right, so now we're figuring out what we need.
And we're gonna have 21,000 in payments to the property owners. So that means at that point, we're short $13,000.
Yeah.
Right, I see what you're saying. So you subtract, yeah.
So 13 plus 47, we need about 60.
Well, the eight, or the 8,700 can, is probably a bit much for your legal and ransom bills, so yeah, you could look. I flipped them.
Okay.
But you're right, either way.
Okay.
You're right, so take the.
So if we just leave the 87.48, that should cover our.
I mean, I think that's gonna be too much, but what he's saying is, don't you think that's too much for ransom?
Okay, so you think you're gonna need 21 and 47, and you got 87.
21, 47, and then whatever you need for.
So you need 68, five, and we've got 87, and we gotta cover legal out of that, or ransom out of that.
And legal.
Yeah, and legal.
So let's do the easy math. You come up with 13 here, right? And now we add on, what's the 29, 48?
So yeah, so it's 60,000, you're right, 60,000 is all legal.
60,000, yeah, plus legal. So, you know, make it $70,000 and, you know, hopefully we don't spend it. If we don't spend it, we, it just, we don't spend it.
Because I'm expecting Will's gonna go over his, and I, I believe from my conversation with him that there, we don't expect that, it may not hit those exact, exact numbers. Do you wanna come up and go over your breakdown?
Okay, yeah.
Cause I think that that number may be.
Well, and I walked over the, uh, properties with, um, the landowners, uh, a month and a half ago.
Yeah, it was about there, yeah.
Time flies, and went over roughly what you were gonna be doing and, uh, what was gonna suffice to them.
Yeah.
You know, they have issues with the, uh, trucker, trucks coming in and out. They wanna make sure that people aren't going into the pit. There's gonna be equipment and stuff down there, so can you explain, um, roughly how you came up with the number that you did?
Um, so when we walked the property, we, uh, the roads just a little shut, the roads just shy of 1,300 feet, so, um, we gotta make it to an NFDA standard of 20 feet, so in theory, we have to make a 10 feet of road, and then we're gonna gravel the whole thing, 20-foot ride, 1,300 feet long.
1,300 feet's to where now?
From what, from West Shore Drive to the, the existing road that you would drive on to.
Before the, before the bridge.
Yeah, before the bridge. And then, uh, we're gonna put eight inches, we talked about either six to eight inches of, uh, crushed gravel, so we're gonna put six to eight inches of, of the crushed gravel. We gotta, we gotta cut some tree, the, the trees have been cut already. Uh, we gotta stump out the whole area, um, dig the vegetation off the little bits there, then there's some spots that we're gonna have to take some material out to make the road wider, um, haul the stumps off, and then, um, also, at the beginning, there's a pole, there's a telephone pole right there, and I've talked to the fire chief about it, and we're a little, we're a little worried about the, uh, the swing for fire trucks when you come out, the entrance onto West Shore Drive, so there's a telephone pole there that's being moved, so we have to extend the two culverts that are there, and we're gonna try to put in a little bit bigger apron. Um, that's why you can see the, uh, there's four culverts on there. Um, there's, there's 80 yards of six-inch gravel in there to build the, uh, apron. Uh, there's some riprap in there to riprap the edges once we get them in there, and then, uh, then the rest of it's just mostly machine time with the excavator to pull the stumps, unload the trucks. There's the trucking fees in there to haul the stumps, haul the gravel in. Um, and I got my loader on there, cause, uh, we're gonna get 20 Jersey barriers to, uh, line up. That was the other concern with the landowners, they want to, uh, we're pretty much gonna try to block off that roadway, so no, but you can't go out into the pit when you get in there, so you're just gonna stay on that one road, so, um, if that number's a little high, we can go with 10. We talked about moving rocks around and lining the roadway with rocks instead. I don't, I mean, that's, it's totally up to you guys. I can do the rocks, or we can do the Jersey barriers. It's, it's totally up to you guys.
I mean, the Jersey barriers isn't a whole lot of money. A couple grand?
Four thousand.
Yeah, it's a hundred.
Thousand, oh, yeah, there you go.
It's a hundred dollars. I'm bringing up here, it's a hundred dollars for the barrier, it's a hundred dollars for them to come get them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the culvert. I mean, honestly, the only, only thing that I see here is the four, the, the culverts.
Yeah.
You. Which is on West Shore Drive.
Yeah, well, that, this was my other, I was gonna put it out there, too. I can, I can extend the culverts and do all that work through my budget, then we can take that stuff, we can take that cost out.
Yeah.
You know, that labor to put the culverts, I can just do that, cause I kinda have to do it anyway, as soon as I get mine.
You're gonna do it whether we?
Yeah, right, so that, that was the conversation.
Don't, don't put it in.
Yeah, right, I was gonna.
The woods coming out?
So he, he's gonna.
You could take the.
The culverts out.
The culverts out, uh, you could take the, take the riprap out, and then, uh, you can take that labor out. That'd be just for the day to put the culverts in, and then.
And I was, I was, I was looking, oops, sorry about that.
Was that 4,000, Tom?
Uh, 4,000 and 936, right? Correct, Will?
Uh, that's with the culverts.
The culverts and the riprap, you said, right?
Yep.
Culverts, riprap, and the labor, not, but we're leaving the Jersey barrier in?
Yeah, the Jersey barrier is staying there.
So it's just the 27, the 936, so that's 36 and 4, so 4,000?
Yeah. Now, I wa, I was just, uh, uh, suggestion. It's all gravel over there.
Yeah.
When I, when I'm building a town road for them, if you, instead of putting the 80 yards of six-inch crush gravel, or the 750 yards of three-quarter crush, if you just did an inch and a half, one-shot deal, you'd probably save yourself a lot of material, wouldn't you?
So you wanna do inch and a half gravel?
Just run an inch and a half. You, you don't, you're not, you're not having to create base. You've already got it.
No, well, I was gonna do inch and a half, but I didn't, I, you know, it's, it's a little bony. I didn't know how people's cars would take it, so I.
Oh, inch and a half, simply.
I mean, I can change it to, to inch and a half.
Just thinking it'd be easier than having to try putting down three inches and having to cap it afterwards, just one-shot it.
How much do you save?
Well, you're gonna save a lot of labor and, and, and.
And we're talking about three weeks, so long as it's safe and, you know, not, uh.
So you, and so you, so you're thinking, instead of the three-quarter, we'll use inch and a half?
Yeah, just run inch and a half over the whole thing, and you can save yourself a little bit of money on the material.
Right.
And plus, you're not having to worry about doubling up your time, putting a three-inch down, then turning around, putting a three-quarter on top, you just one-shot it.
Right.
Uh, it's temporary road.
Yeah, no, we can, uh, I mean, I know they, we talked about six, put the, like, six to eight inches in there, so.
Yeah, whatever, you know, but you, but the trucking's still gonna be the same.
Yeah, right, right.
But you're gonna, you're gonna cut down any machine time laying it down and.
Are they gonna be running trucks in and out of the pit during this time, or?
No, that's why we were supposed to pay them.
That's why we're compensating them, cause they're not, they're, they're lost in revenue.
Where this road is going, they wouldn't be running it anyways.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
This is just for the, uh, local traffic, which goes off from the pit road.
And then you'll see there's the, the 100 yards of erosion mulch on that. When you pull in there, there's like a, there's like a, kinda like a swamp right there, and we talked about, me and Dave, we're just gonna put like a big berm of erosion mulch, just so it kinda comes.
They're doing it on both sides, aren't you?
Both sides, yeah, cause we're gonna stay, I, I don't know if you got, there's a property owner right there that's gonna be kind of affected by this, so, so there's no erosion, we're gonna.
What's his name?
Uh, Gordon Waterman.
Waterman, Waterman.
So we're gonna run a, a berm of erosion mulch on each side, so.
Yeah, what, he was, the biggest concern Waterman had was, he wanted us to stay away from his property line as much as possible, cause he has a pretty nice lawn right there. And so what Will's talking about doing is putting a row of, uh, erosion control right up his property line, kinda like a berm, a barrier to stay off his lawn.
And we're gonna stay five feet off his property line, so the whole road's gonna be, so we'll stake it out five feet, then, then we'll start building.
Is he the only a butter that's impacted by this?
Uh, there's that, then there's Paul Avike, which he's totally fine with.
He's on the other side of the swamp anyways, pretty much.
I've been adjacent to this now.
But the only thing that would have affected him was us moving the pole, like, the way the guide wire is gonna be, it's gonna go at an angle, and he was, he was fine with it. He was there that day, the, uh, CMP was there.
Oh, his power's hooked to that pole on the ground, isn't it?
Uh, not his. It, well, it comes off, it comes off that pole, goes across, and goes down on the ground.
Yep.
So, um, but yeah, that's, that's what we're thinking right now, so.
So what we'll do is we'll minus off those, those couple items.
Yep.
Um, you know, we're gonna put this on the warrant as spent up to, and hopefully, we can not spend all of it. But we don't wanna, we don't wanna cut it short on it either, so.
And then the only other thing, if for some odd reason, the project goes a lot longer than we think, we just have to probably pay another month's worth for the Jersey barriers, cause that's, that's one month, and, but I'm hoping it's not gonna be.
Well, we're on the budgeting for so many weeks.
Right, right.
Aiming to the property.
Right, that was, that's the only other expense that could be, that could be had.
What does the contract said they, uh, will take for the project?
So they want three, oh, um, from Labor Day to Columbus Day, so no more than.
So what's that, five weeks?
Yeah.
I think that is five weeks.
Five, six weeks, yeah.
So, but we're, we're only budgeting for three?
No, we budgeted for seven weeks.
Oh, I'm so, oh, okay, alright, fine, alright, yes.
And you're figuring how long on this?
That was, that, that's for a month.
That's for a four, so.
Yeah, you're not budgeting, and you might wanna budget a little longer.
Yeah, just for the, at least the bar.
They have six weeks for the contract, so you're best off to do seven like that.
You gotta give them all that time, yeah.
Yeah, cause we don't spend it, it's just gonna go back in the general files, anyway, so, um, so, why don't we?
Did I get this, say you were cutting, you were changing the size of gravel, and that would affect something else?
No, no, I mean, it, it'll, it'll save on some labor and stuff, that might help him out there. We're, I don't think we ought to touch any of those numbers, but what, what's in a month for the Jersey barriers?
They're a hundred dollars a piece for the month.
How many are there?
There's 20 of them.
So.
They need two weeks.
That's 4,000, is that $4,000? Is that what it is a month?
Yeah, it'd be four, yeah.
4,000, so. So, yeah, add another 2,000 back to it, just to cover the Jersey barriers and hope that they're done in time.
Okay, alright, that was the only other expense that I think we could have, so, I mean, then, I'll have to order some, I believe in that thing from the, uh, landlord, I think there's, we gotta put up like two signs, I believe. I think there's no pedestrians and no ATV signs. I think that needs to be up, which I can.
On that road, no, no pedestrians?
Yeah, they don't want no pedestrians and no ATVs at any time, so.
So what are you gonna do for signs, you gonna have some made up?
Yeah, I'll probably just have the sign company make me some signs.
Carolina, is that?
Yeah, that's who we use.
Yeah. Okay, you guys all set with that?
So you want me to, I'll take this stuff out, and I'll just send you a new?
Yeah, and add the signs to the bottom.
Okay.
So we have enough, and we can move forward with the-
This project here, I'm not the road liaison anymore, but somebody should be overseeing this project.
If it's okay with the rest of the board, we'd like to let David finish seeing the project out.
That'd be a great idea.
Help you do, please. Yeah, let's not switch.
Yeah, I might tag along with you, but definitely, you've been in the, just in the beginning.
Dan, you all set with that?
I think it makes sense.
Okay, awesome, so what, do you have a final number on that? All we're pretty much doing is, honestly, really, all we're, all we're taking out is nine hundred and thirty-six, plus seven hundred and twelve is really all we're taking out of it.
Then we add in the extra barriers, and he's gonna-
No, I, the ex, the riprap, wait a minute, we're here, the culvert's a twenty-seven twelve.
So you're leaving those in?
Okay, but he's adding back two thousand, so you're really only taking seven hundred and twelve out of that.
So Will, we'll have a draft warrant ready for next week.
Yeah.
We'll have a draft, so he can send me this in the next couple days, I'll make sure you see it via email.
That goes to Warrant Finance after we review it?
Right, so we're gonna create the warrant article, we'll have that ready for next week, he'll give me an updated number, I'll have the articles written, you'll look at it, we'll go ahead and ask Warrant Finance to schedule the meeting, 'cause they're ten days out, so we can all make sure it all starts happening.
We're gonna combine both the agreement with the landowners and his number into one article, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you, Will.
All right, so can we motion, can we agree to at least sign the agreement?
Yes, where is the agreement? There it is.
Oop, you got it right here.
So, Dan and Ed, they-
Pass it on.
They're reading it, everybody has a copy. Those are the stipulations put in by the property owners, just so you know, and then our legal tied it up.
Have these changed since I've looked at it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh.
Because of the timing of this, and I understand the whole process, will that road be substantial enough? People, a lot of boats go out, Columbus Day, between Labor Day and Columbus Day, and they'll have to use the temporary road, will that be, or should we, or should we, the Royal, let people know that?
Once we tie down all the dates, we'll prepare a letter for the board to send out, just so the owners-
Yeah, so that they will know.
I understand the question, are we talking about the temporary road, or the bridge itself?
No, no, temporary road.
'Cause they won't be able to take their boats out during this construction period.
Oh, we know that, but there's gonna be a-
So you're talking about whether or not they can make it down the temporary road?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, obviously, if a fire truck can make it, you should be able to bring your boat down it.
I didn't even think of the fire truck.
And you want them to be told that they, to take them out before the project starts?
The only thing that I think that might be a concern would be if somebody come in with a oversized load, like a very large piece of equipment.
Some construction thing or something like that.
Yeah, that would, might be a concern, especially pulling out from the temporary road.
But they-
I think we, we should, but the problem is, when you post the road, if you're doing a work on the road, the posting doesn't mean anything.
Right.
But, so I think maybe if we contact codes-
I mean, because we would go over.
Because whenever you post the road, if you have a job on the road that you're working on, you can't, you can't restrict someone to get on it. So I think maybe we talk to codes, and if they have any projects starting down there, you give them a heads up, you know, at this point in time, this point in time, that we, if you're gonna get your big stuff in, get it in, but it might be there for a while.
One other question, when you talk about following the temporary road or the pit, is that entering, is that gonna be entered from what I call the boat ramp entry?
Yes, you're gonna come in where the boat launches.
Right, and that's, but it splits there, right? The pit is this way.
Yeah, and actually, I believe, Will, we're gonna block off one of those entrances, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're asked to block that one off, but you're gonna go straight down in, when you get into the, over the bridge, then you're gonna bear right and go right out through the pit.
That sounds like a great way to do it, thanks.
It's the only, the only thing we can do, so we have no other options.
That culvert may also be used by Shapley residents to take their boats out, can we notify them?
Uh, that's a good idea. Is that something, maybe we can contact the, the Lake, the Lake Association, probably put, contact-
Yes, Spear could do that, or-
Yeah.
We'll get a draft letter put together once we have these dates, and we'll send it to the towns and organizations.
Okay, so we, we got a motion, we saw-
They were still reading it.
They're still reading. I'm all set with it. And I assume that's all gone through legal and-
He wrote it.
Yeah, we- Dan changes it all, just accept it.
What do you think, Dan? Any questions?
The, where is it, sorry, I'm a little place. The chained fence entrance that's mentioned in the contract, is that gonna be part of the work, like, that they're providing, or where's that coming from? It says in the contract that there's gonna be a chained entrance?
Yeah, with chained entrance, yeah.
That's the work he's doing.
Okay, I just didn't see if there's a cost for that, or-
Well, that's what we just discussed.
That's the breakdown that you had from District-
Right here, pass this down to him. You got one, that's what you should be looking for, right there, that's the breakdown of cost, it's not actually describing it, but it's giving an idea of what everything is.
Okay, well, that's why I was, I didn't see specifically that part, so I just wanted to make sure that was-
Yeah, you got it right.
Yeah, I'm fine, I think it looks good.
So, I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement with West Shore Development LLC to provide temporary road access on West Shore Drive.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion?
Just to note that there are only three signatures, because at that time, there was a three-member board.
Yeah.
Somebody can add them to the line.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, sign away.
Sign one copy.
That's right here, okay, I'll start right here, I guess. Uh, today is what?
Sixteen.
Six fourteen.
There you go, sir.
What would you like us to? You want just three on that, or you want four? Oh, okay.
Forget them all, yeah.
Should've been back five, yeah, let's put one on the bottom there.
Be nice to see that culvert done, that's for sure.
Yes, it will.
And then we work, work our way to one more bridge, and we'll be doing good.
Got a lot, a lot of-
Yep, last couple, three years.
Yeah, I was kinda picking up where I left off.
Was that a discussion when you, yeah, I thought it was, but for a couple of years.
Okay, so, um-
Sorry, couldn't help it.
Okay, we're down to special town meeting date.
Okay, so now we need to, look at calendars and figure out when we're gonna do this, so if we know that we're going to ask the Warrant Finance to meet in the next ten days, that's gonna be up to the current chair to decide if he wants to wait until before or after July first, or if he wants to sneak a meeting in.
Talking about me?
No.
Are you talking about the finance committee?
Finance committee, correct. Dennis, are you prepared to call a meeting within the next ten days, or you prefer to wait until after July first? Okay, so if we can work with him and get a meeting, let's just say the last week of June, let's tentatively-
That would be like the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh?
Yeah, he likes Mondays usually, twenty-sixth, usually, I'm thinking maybe Monday, if that works for everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe Monday to twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
He always liked Mondays. So we'd have the warrant down there, so they meet there, you don't wanna do it fourth of July week, so how about July, Wednesday, July twelfth?
We've, I can't go back and just ask about the contract for the, with Curtis?
Yes.
We've, we've, we've approved the contract subject to-
Town meeting.
This special town meeting?
No, it was subject to Article-
Forty-two.
Forty-two, Article forty-haven.
So, has that contract now been let to Curtis?
Well, I spoke to him on the phone today, and let him know that it had been signed, we've got, we're gonna communicate this week about the couple of things that he had legal and wanted to work out.
A few fine points, so that's gonna, that's done.
That's done.
So we're really now just, the special town meeting is about the access road.
Access road and paying the property owners.
Okay.
So, we, and really, we're, the town of Acton, at the end of the day, we're getting that culvert for free, because of all the ARPA funds, at the end of the day, so the only thing that's really gonna be coming out of our pockets is gonna be the, the roadwork, the roadway and the property owners, so it's pretty cool.
Very nice.
So what are we looking at?
So I'm thinking either the twelfth or nineteenth.
Well, I think we wanna get this rolling as quick as possible, correct, so our finance, so we're looking at having a a meeting on, on the twenty-sixth this month, correct? That works, Dennis?
Yeah, it'll work.
Okay, so, but they're gonna need what, they're gonna need one meeting or two for this?
It depends on, I mean, if the, I'm thinking of the road, at least if a couple of selectmen go and the road commissioner go, they're really just looking at the work and the agreement, so.
Dennis, can you come up for a second, please?
Because we're not talking about the culvert anymore, that money is set aside, we're talking about the contract.
So we, we've got one article, uh, one article, do you think that's something you guys will be able to get a recommendation on in one meeting?
Yeah, see, why not, just one more article, I mean.
So, well, just trying to figure it out, because, you know, if you need an extra week to think, you're gonna need, you know, to go over it, we, we're trying to figure out the timeline now, so we can kinda have an idea when we can set a special town meeting here.
Like I said, I'll do my best, and if they don't, it won't be on me anyway, so I'll be gone.
From a process perspective, let's say you have the first meeting, and they, they aren't ready to approve it, and they have some follow-up questions, or whatever, how quickly can you meet again? Do you have to wait another ten days, or?
No, I think state law is, state law is seven, isn't it, Jen?
Well, yeah, part of the town, your select board's policy, it's ten days.
Yeah.
And the seven is what, Dennis, what is that?
State law.
For information required.
I mean, I don't see-
Can't do it, then, then we're, now we're talking ten days out from the twenty-sixth.
That's why I was asking, 'cause that makes a big difference.
It makes a big difference, and-
Right, but if we know that the Warrant Finance are going into this, looking at the one piece of paper from Will, which is a breakdown of how much the temporary, temporary road is gonna cost, and whether or not they support the three thousand dollars a week for the agreement, I mean-
How much notice do you need to give to schedule the town meeting?
They have to have it posted for seven days.
So if, if they get to the twenty-sixth, and if they, they need another meeting, we'll, we can know that before we set the date for the special town meeting.
You could, right, and that's what he's trying to ask, we could set two Warrant Finance meetings, just to have them on the schedule, so we don't worry about the ten days.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But what's gonna happen, and I, I believe that Dennis will, will get it done the twenty-sixth, 'cause then what happens following Monday is fourth of July.
Yeah.
The committee members change.
Yeah.
And then they start over with information, so.
So, I mean, if-
Very little information.
If people come and explain what's going on, I don't see why-
Yeah, it's not that-
There wouldn't be any other questions, and-
We'll have at least David and Will there.
Yeah, so tentatively, at this point, if everybody shows up, we would wanna make sure that this gets approved, because we don't wanna turn around and have a new board come in and have to get all caught back up, so we would-
Is there anything that says that the board members can't get the information ahead of time to review?
No, as soon as next Wednesday comes, which is the twenty-first, you guys will have approved the warrant and the wording of it, we'll email it out to them, so they'll have it for three or four days, they'll meet Monday, make the recommendation, you guys will meet Wednesday, make your recommendation, we'll post it on the twenty-ninth, plenty of time for July twelfth.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. All set with the special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, new business, revaluation status, and I like that Tom, you've got some information for us.
I had an opportunity today to meet with the valuation folks, and we reviewed in broad strokes what the numbers are. As you may recall, they are planning to release a letter that would, based on tonight's discussion, go, hopefully go out tomorrow, or they would prepare tomorrow, or go out Friday, and this letter will tell people what their, the results of the valuation work that has been done on their property, in other words, what is the value of your property for our tax assessment purposes, along with that, would also be an indication of what the tax rate will be, or could be. This is not the tax rate, that won't get set until August, but it gives homeowners, property owners, an opportunity to understand, based on the new valuation and the estimated tax rate, what they can expect for a tax bill. In the letter, they will also provide, Jennifer, do you have those dates? I know you gave them to me, and I can't find them.
June twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth, they will be offering appointments, they'll have a number of people that will be here.
Yes, here at the town hall.
So they'll, you know, let's say have a half dozen people, you wanna come in and talk about your valuation.
By appointment only.
By appointment only, you can come in, sit down, they'll go over it with you, and, you know, that process will play out. So, this letter needs to go out, and in going out, we need to put-
She was asking if it was June or July, sorry.
I'm-
June.
To twenty-ninth of June?
Yes, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, some will be during the day, some will be at night, I mean, in that letter-
It will be in the letter, those dates will be in the letter, so you'll, and there'll be a number to call.
Correct.
So you can call, book an appointment, if you want to, if you, if you don't object to things-
Happy with it?
That's great, they would probably love not to have to see everyone, so. Yeah, yeah, sure, please, go ahead.
So it's in reference to the taxes.
So, Susan Man, I believe it was last year, they allowed you, there was another program-
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
Oh, you are?
Stabilization, yes, and I don't wanna jump on Tom, but there are gonna be two different letters that go out. If you were stabilized, qualified by the town hall, then you're gonna get one left.
Last year.
Yes, you had to have it in by December first, we went through all the letters, all the applications, so the letters will be different. It's all in our software, O'Donnell's knows who got the stabilization, who didn't.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Good, good.
Sorry, Tom.
That's all right, that's all right, I, I wouldn't be able to cover that anyways, Jennifer, so, so that's the process. There's a lot of change that's happened with the valuation, and I just wanna kinda cover that in broad strokes. Basically, the, the tax rate is likely to go from today, what is it, eleven ninety-five?
Yeah.
It's probably gonna be something around seven dollars, in that range, and the reason is, the property values in town, after the valuations, have about doubled, so, you know, property values have gone up, all things being equal, the tax rate's gotta go down, so the question is, that I wanna talk to my colleagues here tonight, is what should we be using as that estimated tax rate in the letter? Now, last year, when the taxes were set, we utilized three hundred thousand dollars of undesignated reserves as a credit, taking that in as basically a revenue source, to reduce the tax burden. The question is, what should we do this year? And we've already had a lot of discussion about undesignated reserves, and the fact that we think, or at least some of us, I can't speak for others, I believe that they're higher than they need to be, and we've talked about creating a process in town where residents will have an opportunity to talk about what the town ought to consider doing with this excess. Some have said already in some of the public meetings, they'd like to see it for tax relief, others have capital improvements in mind. This is a discussion that's gotta take place in the town, so for, until that happens, personally, I, my own view, is I would not be throwing anything in to the tax rate, at least at this time. I hope to be able to by the end of July, first of August, be able to determine what the town's bottom line is, and if we have a surplus, then personally, I would look to that as maybe an indication of what we might put as a credit in the tax rate, in order to get that approximately seven dollars down to something less, but, so that would be my thinking on it. The problem is, Mr. O'Donnell needs to know what the number is tomorrow morning, so, so we have to, I'm sorry, but we have to decide this now, so my recommendation is, go with the calculation that excludes any use of undesignedated fund balance. We can continue to talk about this between now and when we finalize the tax rate. I think it's better for people to have a worst case than a, have, send up- I think it's better for people to have a worst case than a, have, send out a number and find that we, oh, no, it's not, it's not six seventy-five, it's actually seven or something like that. I think, I'd rather go with a higher number and just, you know, hopefully we can give everyone a pleasant surprise when we go to finally set the taxes. That's my thought on it.
Nothing's set in stone, right?
Nothing's set in stone, but it, it's gonna go in the letters and people will see it and, um, we may, we may decide to use some of our undesigned fund balances, uh, you know, whether we have a surplus or not. I, I don't know. We need more discussion about that.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Need to know how much it is and what, subtract what was.
Yeah, because, you know, we, we gotta see what the bottom number's gonna be, um, you know, whether or not we, we use our undesigned fund balance there, separate it over a period of time, or, you know, because at the end of the, end of the day, you take, say, three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars towards an eight million dollar budget, it's really not a lot of money.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, the impact on the taxes, you know, what you're gonna get back out is probably not a lot. You're not gonna see a huge, you know, relief. Is, is it better to actually show that we've taken that money and spent it on something like a rec.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah. Okay, you, you know, that's why we really gotta talk to the public and see, you know, do you wanna see your tax rate drop a hundred dollars, or do you wanna see some more roads getting paved or, or built in somewhere?
And our revenues could come in a little higher after our audit is done.
Yeah.
The revenues, we don't, we're using.
We've estimated revenues right now and, you know, until we see the actuals, we don't know what they will be.
We might not need that money.
Do you think the seven dollar is a?
I think the sev, I, I think the seven dollar is, the estimates on revenue, I think, are, are reasonable. We've looked at it through May, the actual revenues through May. So I think the estimate on revenues are pretty good. We know what the expense base is.
Yeah.
That was just approved, so that's, that's, that's known. The valuations could change as a result of the meetings.
Because they do make changes.
They, they, they could lower or increase people's valuation, I don't know if they'll increase, they could lower people's valuation, which could put pressure on the tax rate. So, and, and they've made, and, and so there's still a lot of moving parts, but I think if we use, he recommended six ninety-nine, it's gonna, is what he recommended, six dollars and ninety-nine cents. I would suggest we go with that and, um, once we figure out if there are any abatements or, I'm sorry, what do they call that?
Abatements and supplements.
Abatement, okay.
Supplements.
If they make an abatement or whatever, we'll have those final numbers and if, if at that point, we can figure out what, if any, reserves we wanna put into it. Make sense, everyone?
Yeah.
Very much so.
So, uh, I don't think we need to vote, per se. I think we just have to tell Jennifer, contact Mr. Donnelly and, O'Donnell and.
We are not gonna use any of the unassigned fund balance in the letters.
Yeah.
And stick, you know, go with the draft of six ninety-nine.
Yeah, that'll be worst case scenario.
Do you want to get any comment before we do this?
Yeah, yeah. Anybody, any public comment on this? Come on up, Nancy.
Would you be putting approximately six ninety-nine to sort of give you some wiggle room? I haven't seen the wording. We're waiting for the letter.
Yeah, so.
Uh, but it should say an estimate, or he's using words like that.
He'll say the tax rate and what your new taxes will be.
And Mr. O'Donnell is putting that together?
Yes.
Yeah, he's done it all, yes.
Okay.
But if, again, if you win the stabilization, then your letter's gonna be different, because your taxes aren't gonna change from last year.
That's another question. Did the State of Maine actually approve that?
They did. They moved forward with it at the last minute, so anybody, I shouldn't say anybody, anybody that was approved, we had over four hundred applications in Acton. Um, you're gonna find out what your new valuations are, what your new taxes could be, but because your stabilization qualification is actually gonna have last year's tax number.
That's, that's gonna have an effect on our, our taxes big time.
Oh, it is.
So.
Because, but the state is supposed to pay the difference.
They're supposed to pay that.
But all, they will, but for how, how long are they supposed to do it?
Well, they're only doing it one year at a time.
Okay, yeah.
You'll have to reapply next year for your stabilization every year.
Already, and if your taxes should go down, I assume you would pay the lower rate.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just remember, if, we contacted everybody that did not, um, qualify. We ended up with a half a dozen, so it wasn't bad.
Let me understand that. So if someone's eligible for it, and the tax rate goes from basically twelve to seven, is, is seven their new base that they work with, or?
No, it's the base is the amount of the tax.
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount.
Okay, got it, got it.
Okay, now I'm confused.
They're, they're, oh, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so last year, I did fill out the paperwork.
Fill out your form, yeah, and let's just say that, as we went into Trio, we confirmed your, your ten years, we okayed yours and we put whatever the current year's taxes were. Let's say they were fifteen hundred dollars. So you got.
That would be nice.
Trying to make you feel good.
All right, three thousand dollars. I don't know what your taxes are. So her stabilization is three thousand dollars worth of property taxes. So her valuation goes up, you're not gonna pay more than three thousand dollars.
Really?
That's the stabilization. The State of Maine is gonna pay the town of Acton the difference.
Huh, huh, okay, cool.
For a little.
One good thing about having gray hair, huh?
Just remember, you have to apply every year. The applications will not be available until August.
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Okay, are we all set on that? No more public comment?
Sending, sending email now, yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna roll at seven, six nine nine.
Yes, let him use his recommendation.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're at public comment now. Anybody, any public comment?
Any public, I'm sorry.
Sorry, they weren't listening to me, they were, they were listening to you.
Okay, I just have a question in regards to the, uh, town report. Is that still tied up?
No, it's been, um, it's been in the printer now, I guess, for a good week, week and a half. Um, as soon as the audit was done, we sent it over. Um, I have the draft bound in my office, um, they're.
So did we have it on Saturday?
No, you did not have it on Saturday. We have a, we have, when the town report is done, we send it all over to them. They FedEx us an actual one town report to make sure it's approved. So that was done, an email was sent, placing the order, they're producing the five hundred that we're looking for. We haven't received them yet.
Okay.
But we couldn't go to print the town report without the audit.
Right. Well, it seems to me that the audit slowed things down dramatically.
Yeah, I mean, last year.
By months.
Last year, we didn't put the town, we didn't put the audit in the town report, if you remember, and, you know, because of the timing, and we got slacked, we printed copies of the audit and put it inside the town report. So this year, it was, you know, it was gonna be a complete annual report. We had to wait for the audit and we, as soon as we got it, it was shipped off.
Well, this is just for information only, but there is a law that says that you have to have copies of the report to be deposited in the municipal office or a convenient place, three days before the annual meeting. So because of the auditors, you.
Three days what?
Three days before the annual meeting.
Okay.
So we will.
The warrant?
Not for the warrant, for the town report.
What's the statute you're reading?
Actually, I didn't know.
Ever heard of that before.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not eating up on any.
Well, we're, we're trying to get the town report as quick as we can. We had that town meeting, though, so we pay the bills.
Thank you.
So according to this, you have to have it three days before the annual meeting.
Okay.
So because of the auditor, I mean, I don't know what you're gonna do about that. But because of that, because of them, you're in violation, or were in violation.
We're hoping this year, with the, with, um, some of the things that were, you know, Roy and some of the things we're trying to do, um, this won't be an issue again. We're hoping. We're gonna try our hardest so it's not, but we, we tried our hardest. We, we, we worked with the auditor. We pushed, 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 pushed. We go in, pushed so hard, we got it when we got it. And, you know, we could only get it in the, uh, town report as quick as we got the, you know, the audit. So we, we, we tried our hardest. We just, we, nothing we could do, we couldn't push, we can't push off town meeting. I mean.
No, you can't do that. I, I totally, you're in a, in a real pickle.
This is, this is, go ahead.
I think with Roy, with, um, Barry Talbot, we're, we are gonna have, uh, a set of unaudited financial statements probably in late fall.
So that's why you think next year will be a non-issue?
And, did, did we put the entire audit in the annual report?
Short form.
Short form. I've looked at some other towns and they don't typically, the ones I've seen don't always do that. I would suggest that we pick, you know, we could talk about, pick like a half dozen schedules, you know, that, that we would extract from what the accountants are gonna give us and put it in there, because there's no requirement that the numbers be audited that go in the annual report. I don't believe so. And then we can get this thing, that we can get the annual report out.
Yeah, because it's, it's unfortunate. You have to be mindful of it because it's the law.
Just a thought, I think it's something we probably ought to bring up, you know, another meeting.
Yeah.
Right. So anyway, I thought I'd bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Because the auditor, it seems like they're not helping you to keep your schedule.
Yeah.
Is that a nice way of putting it?
I mean, you've completely heard. I mean, you heard Tom speak every single week for the whole year for the audit. I mean, you know, it is what it is. We're doing the best that we can.
Yeah, right here, but anyway, I thought you'd enjoy it.
Okay, appreciate it. Um, went down to announcements, so what I normally do is I look around and see if, you wanna read off announcements tonight, Dan?
Sure. So June fifteenth, uh, twenty, okay, uh, twenty twenty-three, Planning Board Sightwalk, four thirty PM at one eleven, yeah, and Lane. June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Planning Board Sightwalk at five, five PM at Nassau Road. June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Planning Board Meeting at six PM. June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, Board of Selectmen Meeting at six PM. June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, Road Committee Meeting at six PM. And June twenty-eighth and twenty twenty-three, Board of Selectmen Meeting at six PM.
Okay, um, you guys got anything else?
I do not.
Not to me.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night, everybody.